All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October regular meeting of the Alexander Board of Education. I'd like to call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Everyone would please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Your reports, we'll start off with the superintendent's report.
All right, we got a lot. First off, I'll start off with things that aren't on the agenda and just to begin, and I'm glad Fran's here today. Last weekend, we had an old timers baseball game, and Fran was the point person in making this happen. And a lot went into it. And I was really pleased that we had, I don't know how many spectators we had, but there might have been 100 people here that drifted in and out at some point in time. And it was really just a good time, and a lot of people had fun. I know Jerry was selling tickets, and FFA chipped in and sold food, and just a lot of good things. Another example of the good things that happened here, but it wouldn't have happened without Fran, I just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Next year, we're gonna hopefully do a doubleheader with a women's game and a men's.
See, this is where you guys get dangerous. You start adding to it. You start adding to good things. We'll see. But we'll see. But it was a really good time, and I do appreciate it, and I know the people that were here really appreciate it. So just wanted to say thanks. In an athletic tone, we have tournament season starting up for a lot of our kids, and our kids have been very successful, especially our soccer teams and our volleyball team, they've been exceptional. And so those playoff tournaments are going to be key, and I believe next week, is that right, Roll?
Yep.
Yep, next week, they're gonna begin, and so there'll be tournament play. Our kids have been very competitive, so we're really excited for them, and they have a lot of potential. So let's see if they can go make some noise. Now, that's the fun stuff, okay? And that's the important stuff that we do. But some of the other things that are going on that are impactful to us as an operational district and element in the community is there is a lot of political action taking place at this moment, literally at this moment. Legislators in Columbus are working really hard right now to overturn vetoes that were put in by the government. Many of those vetoes impact us. When he, not getting too far back, but he put in vetoes to put a little shelter on us, and they're now being challenged. And so we don't know how all that's going to play out, but over the next couple of weeks, we're going to learn more. Some things have played out, we're not gonna benefit from, but we're not gonna get hurt by in the last couple of days. But there are other things that are still at stake, and I sent you guys an email, and I sent that to the staff, and it says, there is a lot at stake, and you can see the numbers, and you're all math guys, so you understand the numbers, and the math never lies. All of those could be really impactful. I will keep you posted on how those things play out. Trying to understand it from my point is a challenge, and I rely on a lot of good, smart people, know this at a deeper level than I do. But all of this really began, and the crux of it all for a lot of the people is the property tax. Property tax has become a big hot button with our politicians. It's not something that's happened in a moment. This began back in the mid-'90s, and I'm taking, again, I'll take information from people who do this for a living. This all began in the mid-'90s, where big business paid 60%, I'm using rough round numbers, of our property taxes. Property taxes fund schools, our libraries, our police forces, they maintain our roads, fire trucks, things like that. For many years, those were funded by big business largely. They used to be about 60%. That ratio, 40% was Class 1, and that was people. That's everyday people, that's you and I. We pay those taxes. That ratio shifted. Big business now pays less than. Big business, that's the way the state has been drawing business to us, is to say, we're gonna charge you less in taxes, and those taxes have been shifted to us. We now carry the brunt of property tax burden, and that's hard, and people are mad, but this has been scripted. It's not accidental. The thing that bothers me, and bothers a lot of schools and superintendents, treasurers especially, they don't like this at all. And they have least fun of anybody, I can tell you that. But it bothers me, and it bothers others in my position and many boards, because we are being made to blame for the position that we're in, when we are reactive to what's been given to us. We're run by boards. Libraries are run by boards. Townships are run by boards. Communities are run by boards, and that's where the funds are divided and set. Those are run by people, making decisions based on what they have, but they've been getting less and less, not through their own actions, and we are also at mercy of that, too. We are getting less and less, but not based on our actions. We are trying to be as efficient. I applaud you guys in your number sense, okay? We'll butt heads once in a while about certain things, but I applaud your number sense and your understanding of money and numbers. So you're good with money. There are many other organizations similar to us that are good with money, and they are at no fault of what's happening, but they have to react to it. So there's a lot that's happening now, and like I said in the email, the message said, staff, talk to people if you know people. If you have a connection to a legislator or commissioner, or somebody in business or leadership, ask those questions. How will you backfill the losses that are being laid out? Because there has to be a plan. No one's really shared a plan. There have been suggestions and rumors put out, but I know from experience that nothing's free, and if I tell you, you don't have to pay taxes anymore, I would be happy. If I didn't have to pay taxes anymore, I'd be thrilled. But then, there's another side to this, in that you have to say to yourself, what's it gonna look like next? Because in any instance in my life where I thought I was going to get ahead because of some change, don't have to buy diapers anymore, man, I'm gonna be rich. Wait a minute, I have new expenses, childcare. All right, well, I don't have to pay for childcare anymore, and we're gonna be loaded. There are other things that come in.
They become teenagers.
Yes, they become teenagers. But there will always be something, and no one has explained to me the something. Is it coming in an income tax? Is it coming in fees for our basic uses, our cars, automobiles? Is it going to be that kind of thing? And if it is, they haven't told us what that plan is. But I worry about anything that's free, because nothing's free. If you told me I had to pay property taxes, I would worry, because I need to know what the plan is to fulfill the services that we receive for those things. Schools, library, police, fire, all of those things, roads, they're all really important. So politically, right now's an important time. I don't know if this is one of those moments in time, those legendary moments in time where everything shifts, but there's so much happening at once, you have to wonder. So I will keep you guys posted on what's happening, from what I know, and let you know. But just understand that the financial situations that we're in, and it's not just us, it's every other district, are a result of other actions, and in my opinion, not the misspending or use of money by us. So there's my little political stump session, but I think it's important that people understand that. Nothing's free. No one's moving to say you don't have to pay for something anymore. I believe that's gonna come back in another way, and it may be more expensive, but... All right. Got anything to add to that? Not yet. Not yet. Okay. All right, so there's my little political piece. And if anybody has a question about it, or anyone has ideas, I'd gladly talk to them. And I think most of you have my phone number and a way to reach me, so you just call, and we'll talk. Next on my list, I have the newsletter, and if you've had a chance to look at it, it looks pretty darn good. I can take a lot of pride on finding other newsletters and working with Molly a little bit and getting out of her way, because all the people that I work with filled in the newsletter, but Molly made it work. Molly does an exceptional job of putting these things together, and we did gather newsletters from other districts, just to kind of see what they're doing. Districts that I have respect for and that I know are doing a good job, and when we laid ours next to theirs, and all of this came because we lost service this summer to nail it. So we said, while we have time, let's look at it and let's revise it. And so we picked some really good ones and said, a school different than us, and that school's no better than us, and we can do a better job. I know people liked what we put out to begin with. I've heard nothing but high praise since it's been out, and I think it's an important key in making connections with the community. I want to take it a little step further. I still have to work out some details technically with Mike, with Mark, about how we reach out to some people that aren't even here anymore. So we'll find a way to do that, not just electronically, but maybe we can send paper versions elsewhere as well. So we'll do that in small steps. But if you see Molly, give her a pat on the back and kudos, and it's well earned. Next up, we've got Mrs. Smith, and Mrs. Smith is here. This is her opening act on the report card. We've been talking a lot about the report card, and it's, when you talk to other districts about the report card, you'll get different views. You get different views of its importance, its significance, the feelings and emotion that come with it. I really do my best not to try to tie emotion to it. It, for me, is a factual piece. It's numbers, man, doesn't lie. This is where we are, okay? What can we learn from it? We're doing some things, in my opinion, we're doing some things really well. We're doing some other things that we're getting better and that we can improve, and there's no shame in that at all, because there are very few places where you can do it all really well. I can't do everything well. I can do some things really well, and I think we're pretty similar to that. But I don't want to give her a presentation, so I'm gonna be quiet, and I'll pass this on to Mrs. Smith and let her do her thing.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Yeah, so I just want to start by saying that this data is representing kind of the outcome summary data of everything that we did last year. So this represents the things that we did that were working, and it represents where we have opportunities to improve. So throughout this, I will be talking about some of the things that we're already doing, and you're gonna hear some reoccurring themes, but I do also want to mention that we have district-wide diagnostics that we use as formative norm reference assessments, and that would include tests like iReady and MAP that kind of give us more throughout the year data points, and that way we can change what our action steps are. So my goal tonight is just to connect what this means and highlight both our strengths and our areas for growth, and share the action steps that we already have in motion and that we are planning on continuing and changing. So if you have any questions throughout this, please feel free to ask. And I do want to remind everyone that there is, if you go to the Ohio Report Card website, that there is a significant amount of data that I am not gonna have as part of my slides, but you can go on and you can really manipulate that data and really get a full range of all the data from what the state provides. So this is this year's traditional report card ratings, and you see we have six components. The two that feed in the most for our rating is the achievement component and the progress component at 25%, and the rest all hold the 12.5% feeding into our overall rating. The six components are achievement, which is a measure of how well students perform on state tests. Progress is a measure of the growth students are making based on their past performance. Gap closing is a measure of the reduction in educational gaps for student groups. Early literacy is our measure of reading improvement and proficiency for students in kindergarten through third grade. Graduation is the measure of fourth-year adjusted cohort graduation rate and the five-year adjusted cohort graduation rate. And then the college, career, workforce, and military readiness is a measure of how prepared Ohio's students are for the future opportunities, whether training in a technical field or preparing for worker college. And this is the first year that this has actually been part of our rating. So it was there last year as data, but now this is actually part of our rating. So that is new. This is our district report card, so this is combining both the elementary and junior high and high school. We're going to hit each of these components in more depth, but this is the overall view. As you can see, that all components have a possibility of five stars, and it shows how many stars we earned in each of those components. I'm going to talk about kind of how they came up with those percentages, and what does that mean as far as data and what we're gonna do about it. This slide is showing our overall highlights as far as how many stars we earned compared to the 607 districts statewide. So overall, we have four stars, which means we exceed state standards, and we were ranked 172nd out of 607 districts statewide. Our top scoring component was our graduation rate with five stars, and we were in the top 100 out of the entire state for graduation, which is pretty awesome. You can see the rest of the rankings there and kind of what the notes and highlights were for each of those. I did share this, and this will be shared online as well for anyone, any families, any community members that would like to look at this a little closer. So this is kind of out of glance. This shows the comparison for the first column being our district, which is what you just saw. The middle one is our elementary out of glance, and then the junior high high school out of glance, and based on the averages from the elementary and the junior high high school, that's how we got our district. So you can kind of see the difference in those ratings per school. So the first component I'm gonna talk to you about is the achievement component, and this measures how well students meet the state's expectations on the Ohio State test across English, Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies. And this focuses on two key measures, which is the performance index. That gives credit for every single student, not just those who score proficient. It awards more points for the higher achieving levels, and we're gonna get into that in the next component. The next section that this measures is the proficiency rate, and this is showing the percentage of students who scored at or above proficient in each subject. Just to note that the proficiency rate is not calculated in the achievement rating. So the only one that actually has weight as far as the achievement component rating goes is the performance index. So they give us the data for how many students performed proficient, which is passing the test or above, but that does not calculate into our rating. Our performance index has continued to trend upward. In 2021, we had 73.1, and we have moved to 86.5 this past year, which represents four years of steady improvement, and that increase shows that more of our students are scoring at the higher performance levels, not just passing the test. So I'm going to move on a little bit here. I have this slide to show the performance index trends, which is the levels of proficiency. So you can see that the bottom is our limited. Basic is the light blue, and both of those are in the non-passing range. The proficient is your burnt orange color, and that is the passage rate. Accomplished is above that, advanced, and then advanced plus, and I think that this trend data shows that we are really focusing on making sure that enrichment is a focus, and we are pushing those students who need enrichment to be in the accelerated range, which is the advanced plus. So we're actually allowing students to have grade level, be at the same grade level as their peers, but if they are performing at a higher grade level in math, let's say, they are able to take math classes at a higher grade level and take the higher grade level tests. So that's showing that we are increasing that area. I don't have the, there's a lot of data that you can go through, and it's by grade level, so to put it all on one slide or multiple slides would be a lot, but just so everyone knows that our proficiency rates, you might notice that they're in some lower ranges, some of them, some of them are in higher, but as far as that goes, it's important to remember that this is based on the Ohio State tests, which are pretty rigorous tests and a lot of high-level text reads, so a lot of comprehension before you can even answer the questions that have to go with that subject-level questioning. So the state uses these results to measure the depth of knowledge and problem solving and reading comprehension in addition to just the content mastery. So based on that, we know that with our lower-performing sections, we need to strengthen our Tier 1 instruction, and we need to make sure that we're targeting those Tier 2 students, whether that be, you know, if they're not performing at grade level, if they're not hitting that proficient mark, what are we doing to fill that gap? What are we doing to support those students? And so this data helps us determine what and who we need to do that with. This is the calculation that they use to give us our percentage and our rating for the achievement component. And as you can see, the higher the achievement level, the more percentage of points, the more points that we're getting for this level. So for instance, advanced plus, we had 2.5% of our students in, scoring in the advanced plus range, which is multiplied by 1.3, giving us 3.2 points. So the higher that the students are achieving, the more points we get. So 86.5 points was our total points received based on all of the numbers that you see This is our proficiency by enrolled grade, so you can see how many tests were taken in the middle column in each of those grade levels and the tests proficient, so how many were, how many students passed that test, which gives us the percent proficient percentage. And that's a breakdown for our whole district. If you guys have time to kind of look through that data, you can see where some of our percentages were higher, and we have some areas that we are focusing on already where they're lower. And again, this data does include different grade levels of students, especially when you get to high school, you have students that might be, and freshmen and sophomores taking your, you know, your high school math classes. You might have some of those where we had students who were the accelerated students taking those grade level tests. So this does have a combination of different students, but that is the overall proficiency by enrolled grade. So just some highlights and celebrations for this. Again, I already talked about the performance index trend. We did have over 60% of our students at or above proficiency overall in the district. Our science performance, eighth grade and high school biology exceeded the state's rating and similar district averages. Our third grade in math and ELA held above state averages, and a lot of those with the new curriculum and everything coming out for third grade and what our focus has been, those have seemed to all be trending downward this year, but we did score above state averages on both of those. The junior high math, so grade six and grade eight in particular, did improve over prior cohorts. Our high school government history and biology has continued to perform above the state average. That data also includes some of our students who go to Tri-County, so even with the students that may not have been in seats in our classrooms, that data is still continued to be high. Acceleration, we've been accelerating students in math from grades five until high school, and our advanced performance combined with advanced plus has increased to over 20%. We did have 12 perfect scores, which I think is awesome throughout the district, and we are recognizing those students next board meeting in November, and I am really excited about that, so I did already submit those names. That's pretty fantastic, especially with the rigor rate of these tests. I will just mention, and I won't mention the name yet, because I don't wanna, you know, have a celebration without the person here, but there was one person who scored perfect on not just one test, but two. So that's a huge achievement, and I think that says a lot for our students. We will celebrate that next month as well. Okay, so areas for continued focus. Obviously, we have some focus areas in math with our geometry score being 50%, seventh grade math was 45.9, fifth grade math 55.9, and that tells us we really need to focus on our Tier 1 core instruction. So when we think about half of our students not getting a passing rate, that tells us we need to really focus what we're doing with all students in our core instruction. And this is one of our focus areas, and we've been focusing on that since, I think they actually talked about that in their May BLT meeting, like knowing that this is gonna be a focus. So that has been rolling into this year, knowing that this is what we are going to target. We are also targeting our Tier 2 targeted instruction, which is those, which are those students that are not performing at grade level. So what do those students need to close the gap? ELA, our fourth grade and our ELA 2 remain key areas for the same thing, and we are going to focus on implementing MTSS systems to reduce our basic unlimited levels, which we were at 36% with. And we are using our MTSS framework and system to support not only differentiation in Tier 1, but targeted instruction in Tier 2 and intensive instruction in Tier 3. So we actually just met with our elementary teams last week, and we went through the review and some of the changes that ODEW has come out with, with the MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of support, in case you didn't know that. So that means that we have tiers for all students. Tier 2 would be for those students who are at either end of the spectrum that need intervention or enrichment, and then Tier 1 would be those students that need intensive intervention or intensive enrichment. So we talked a lot about that in elementary. I'm meeting with all of the high school teams at the end of this month to kind of go over the same thing, so we're all using the same language and we're all following the same system. Okay, progress component. So progress component. This is measuring how much academic growth our students make in a year compared to their academic peers across the state. This is where we really see the impact of what we're doing with instruction, because it looks at whether students made more expected or less growth than similar students statewide. So this is regardless of whether they started on level, below level, above level during the year, it starts where they started at the beginning of the year and shows how much growth did they make from where they started. So I'm really proud to share that our overall growth index was 2 and 89 hundredths, which earned us a four-star rating, and that means our students made more growth than expected last year, and the effect size was 400ths. So that just tells us that there is evidence to support that we were statistically significant and educationally meaningful with our instruction last year. So this is just our growth component. When we dig into the subject areas, we can see that our junior high math and When we dig into the subject areas, we can see that our junior high math in grades five through eight ELA showed some, some of the strongest growth. Science in grades five and eight were also exceeding growth targets. And our high school courses, algebra one, English two, biology, met expected growth, which is exactly what we want to see as far as moving kids forward. So that also goes back to our multi-systems of support and what we're doing in tier one, tier two and tier three, and how we can keep moving every single student forward, no matter where they are. So some highlights for this area. Again, we had an overall growth index of 2 and 89 hundreds, which gave us four stars. And that means that our students made more growth than expected. Our junior high math showed the strongest growth, which was rated our light blue. Now there's another piece of this data that is linked in the higher report card, but you can click on that and see kind of the colors that are shown here, which is the light blue, which means significant evidence of more growth. ELA growth, we met or exceeded expectations. Science growth, we, in fifth and eighth, both exceeded growth targets. High school, we did meet expected growth in algebra, English two and biology. And that just talks to our consistent trends that support what we're doing with the curriculum, instruction and also intervention and enrichment. So we're focusing all students. So our areas of focus, again, we're focusing on ELA in fourth grade and math in fourth grade, because they did have evidence of less growth. High school geometry, American history and government, below expected growth, but they have had consistent higher passing rates. We are going to be reinforcing tier one expectations and strengthen vertical alignment between grade bands. Okay, the next component is our gap closing and that measures how well we're supporting all students, especially subgroups, in meeting state expectations in areas like achievement growth, graduation attendance and gifted performance. This is really about equity and access. So are all of our student groups moving? Are they improving? And are we narrowing the gaps between those who are already performing well and those who need additional support? So our overall score was 57.1% and we met 24 out of 42 possible points, which shows that we have solid progress closing these gaps. Now I will say that some of these areas are kind of the all or nothing. You either get all five points or you get none. So if you see some of those areas, especially the identification services, you can't just get one point. You can't get two. It's either five points or zero points. That's the way the state's, state's kind of created this. So moving into some of those detailed areas. We have demonstrated progress toward equity-based targets. We have very strong performance across all student groups in graduation. We met our goal across all student groups. Our gifted indicators, we did have five stars in our gifted value added. We had a 98% in our gifted performance index. And we had a 74.2% in our gifted identification and service and the goal there was 80. So we missed getting those five points by, you know, around six points there, six percentage points. Chronic absenteeism improved to 20.3 and that just shows that we're not just doing multi-systems of supports in academics, but we're also doing it for attendance. We're also doing it for behavior. It goes across all of those areas and we're supporting all of our students. And if we need to intervene and provide supports, our team is doing that and it has been effective. We did have 100% testing participation rates. So that's a, that's a big deal too. Our areas for continued focus. Our students with disabilities in both reading and math, we did have some negative growth indexes. So ELA, we had a negative 1.6 and math, we had a negative 1.5. So focusing on our students with disabilities is a big area that we are trying to work through right now. Our chronic absenteeism, the goal is, was actually 16.4% last year. But the state says, hey, you can either achieve this goal or you can improve from last year's attendance, chronic absenteeism rates, and you can still meet that indicator, which is what we did. But obviously, we're still trying to focus on meeting that goal of 16.4. Equity and achievement, so closing remaining gaps in performance between students with disabilities and all other subgroups. And then we're still trying to embed that data within our TBTs, so our teacher-based teams, our BLTs, which is our building leadership team meetings, and DLT meetings, which is our district leadership team meetings. And aligning all of that within our MTSS framework. So basically, in summary here, we have a strong system for subgroup data analysis built into our, our leadership and our team meetings. We're no longer looking at these numbers once a year. We're looking at them regularly and tracking their progress throughout the year. And then we're just, we're adjusting what we're doing based on that. In short, the gap closing component shows that our intervention systems and attendance supports are working and that we are on the right path to ensuring growth and achievement for all students, not just some. Our work is to sustain those gains and keep shrinking those gaps just year over year. Okay, next is early literacy. And this is measuring how well our district is supporting students in kindergarten through grade three on the foundations of learning to read. So this combines three areas. This combines our third grade reading proficiency, promotion to fourth grade, and improving K through three literacy, which looks at how many students move from off-track to on-track during the year. And our overall component score was 68.6%, which means we're making steady progress. But it also highlights that we have this area as a major focus this year. So our third grade reading proficiency was 62.5%. We had 100% of our fourth graders promoted to fourth grade. And it's 65.8% of our students who started the year off-track moved to on-track by the end of the year, with the strongest improvement being from second to third grade transition. And I will just let everyone know now that this is going to be changing next year. So this piece of the component, as far as the promotion to fourth grade, will be changing a little. So the 100% represents students who were promoted to fourth grade and some of those students may have had an IEP. And one of the pieces of I, of the individual education plan is if they should be exempted from the third grade guarantee. If they should be exempted from being retained in third grade instead of moving to fourth grade. So those students who maybe didn't pass, but they were exempted, have been counting towards our promotion to fourth grade because they were exempted. Next year, that will not be the case. It will not allow us to count any exemptions as part of the promotion to fourth grade. And I will also add that the promotion to fourth grade is also a piece of our proficiency in third grade reading, because it shows us how many students have moved, I didn't put that slide in, have moved from third grade to fourth grade and have been on track then. So that means they, they will be counted twice. They're kind of counted twice now. And if they change this, that would kind of change our weight from 40% and 35% to students moving to fourth grade and that proficiency in third grade reading, pretty much equaling 75%. So just giving everyone a heads up that that is going to look different next year. Okay. This slide is showing our percentage of students who were off-track to students that moved to on-track. So if you look at kindergarten diagnostic, which is given at the beginning and taken at the beginning of the year, to first grade diagnostic, so a year later when they're first graders at the beginning of the year, out of all of the students who were off-track in kindergarten, in first grade, 45.2% of those students that were off-track moved to on-track. So about half of our students moved to on-track by the diagnostic of their first grade year. 54.8% of those stayed off-track. That is the same for first grade diagnostic moving to second grade. So the first graders who took their diagnostic, out of those students that were off-track, we had 34.2% of those in second grade moving to on-track. So they were now on-track. We had 65.8% that stayed off-track. This data is only showing those students that, that were off-track at that diagnostic. Second grade diagnostic to third grade. So we had 12.9 students that moved to on-track from our second grade diagnostic to our third grade diagnostic. 87.1% stayed off-track. Third grade to, so they do third grade, beginning of the year diagnostic, which we use cadence, by the way, as our diagnostic. And they compare that data to the end of the year Ohio State test, which third graders have two opportunities to take. So either one, they can pass and that would count our data to allow them to be on-track. So third grade diagnostic to third grade ELA test, we had 39.5 students that were off-track, moved to on-track and 60.5% stayed off-track. So overall, our average, we had 34.2% of our students who were off-track moved to on-track. And on average, we had 65.8 students remain off-track, which again, is a reason why this is one of our focus areas. So basically, each number would be a little different, because the amount of kindergartners who were off-track, which I don't have that data right in front of me.
Just at the, at the just roll-up level overall? Is that a third of our total students who were off-track at the beginning?
Somewhere between like 5% to 35% by grade level.
Okay, so it's not insignificant?
No, not really not. And that was one of the reasons we had our meetings for our elementary, our elementary grade level meetings last week, was to really focus on this data. So looking exactly at this year's diagnostic data, looking at who is off-track. Those students get a reading improvement plan. What are we doing with those students? So we have been utilizing, like I said, the multi-systems of support, but we have been delving in a little deeper to find out exactly what do these students need. So for example, if we have a kindergarten student, let's go first grade. If we have a first grade student who's off-track at the beginning of this year, Shawna Costable and our teaching fellows take those students and they give them what we call a diagnostic assessment. That diagnoses exactly where they need to start their work to fill that gap. So let's say our first grade shows they're below level. That doesn't really give us a lot of information as far as what do we need to do now? It just tells us they're off-level. So we have went a little deeper and it tells us maybe Sally needs to work on vowel sounds. She doesn't know her vowel sounds. So this gives us that information, shows us exactly where we need to start. And our intervention groups, which we're calling what I need, the students need, whatever that is. So this Sally needs to work on short vowel sounds. Any other students that need to work on short vowel sounds as well, will be grouped with her and that's what they're going to work on. Those students are getting progress monitored weekly or bi-weekly. And then we are keeping track of that data to see if, is what we're doing in tier one in, in our targeted instruction working? Yes or no? What do we need to change? So we're not just waiting until the diagnostic. We're doing this regularly so that we can keep on track of these students that are scoring off-track specifically. So any other questions about that before I move on?
No, no, just trying to get a frame of perspective. Thank you.
Yeah, good question. So obviously, this year's data, our highlights and celebrations, 100% of our third graders were promoted to fourth grade. We did have 65.8% of our previously off-track students moved to on-track. And then our, over the year-over-year diagnostic gains, we have shown growth in those. So those are some highlights. Obviously, just as we spoke, we have a lot of continued focus areas in this and we've already began the process of, of the change that we're implementing this year. So obviously, one of our, our goals is to have a 10 to 15 point increase with intensified target instruction or intervention and progress monitoring. So we're using the data to inform what we're doing. All K through three ELA core instruction is a focus area. We're really wanting to make sure that we are differentiating what we're doing in our core instruction. So yes, they're all getting these standards, this grade level expectation. But if this person needs something at a different level than this one, we're giving them that during that time. We're reducing the initial off-track rates. That's the goal. And then we did get a new preschool curriculum and we're making sure that we are enhancing our literacy readiness with the implementation of that. Okay, the next is graduation. And this is measuring both our four-year and five-year graduation rate. And we're combining them into one weighted score. So 60% for our four-year rate and 40% for our five-year. What this component is really telling us is whether we're ensuring that every student has a pathway to successfully complete high school, whether that happens on time or with additional support. Our weighted graduation rate was 98.6%, which is outstanding. Again, this is the one area that we hit in the top 100 in the entire state compared to 607 other districts. And reflects the level of consistency and care that we are implementing for our high schools, high schoolers. I will move to, okay, yeah. So you can see that what our percentage and the weight that it, that it carried for those and how we ended up with our rating there. Highlights and celebrations. Again, we ended up with a 98.6 graduation rate. Subgroup strength, all student groups were above 90%. We had a multi-year stability at or near 98 to 99%, which was outpacing our state and former school districts. We have a high completion rate that reflects effective credit recovery, alternate pathways and post-secondary advising. We still want to focus on our students with disabilities and making sure that we're making, building those relationships and creating transitions that bridged the gap to make sure that we're reaching 95% or higher with those students. Economically disadvantaged was at 94.7%. And we're going to continue our early warning data collection and making sure that we're acting on that information when we get it and supporting our attendance. Okay, the last is our college career, workforce and military readiness. This is also called CCWMR. And again, this is the first year that this has been included in our rating. This measures how well our graduates are prepared for life after high school. It looks at the percentage of students in the four-year graduation cohort who meet at least one of the state-approved readiness indicators. These include things like earning industry-recognized credentials, passing AP or college credit plus courses, earning remediation-free ACT or SAT scores and completing work-based learning or earning the Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal. So this has a lot of information in it and this is something that we're all learning and evolving with. But our readiness score was a 74.8%, meaning that nearly three out of every four graduates demonstrated readiness through at least one of these indicators. And that's up more than 10 percentage points from last year. Although it wasn't in our rating, we still did have this component just for the data piece. So some highlights in this area. 83 out of 111 students in the four-year cohort, which let me just make sure everybody knows, it wasn't our 2025 graduates. It would have been our 2024 graduates. So this is a year past, okay? This, these students met at least one of the readiness indicators. We had an increase of 10%, 10.7 percentage points. And students pursued a mix of two-year and four-year enrollment, industry credentials, AP, DE credits and workforce entry. So we also had contributing indicators. These are some examples that counted. Industry-recognized credential, honor diploma, dual enrollment credit, AP exam scores of more than three, ACT, SAT remediation-free, Ohio Means Job Readiness Seal with work-based learning, apprenticeship and military enlistment. So those are all pieces that are graduating classes of 2024. So, those are all pieces that our graduating classes of two thousand twenty-four had contributed indicators score. So, um, only forty-five to forty-nine percent of our students, um, currently are prior, uh, have completed the FAFSA, so just making sure we're reaching out to those families and having those discussions, um, and making sure that there's not support needed is an area of focus. Um, expanding access to high-value industry credentials and aligned work-based learning. Um, we're all kind of learning a little bit about this area, especially with transitions and things. So, um, this is one of those areas that we're kind of researching a little bit more heavy. AP, DE participation and success. This is, um, maintaining access while monitoring exam pass rates. And then, data validation. So, again, um, we're collaborating with our EMIS coordinator, the counselors, the principals, just to make sure that we have, um, all the pieces that we need to have reported, reported, and if there are pieces that we're missing, that we are trying to find out, how can we implement those? So, making sure we're putting into place data validation meetings to, um, discuss that. So, we've already been working on a lot of these, so these are current action steps that are in progress and will continue, but again, the data validation. Um, making sure that our data is consistent and it's being reported consistently. Focusing on grade level meetings, reviewing MTSS and making sure that we are putting in tier-two literacy structures for our elementary students. Using math data to identify students for enrichment or intervention, so we're also focusing on math, not just literacy. Emphasis on aligning instruction with state rigor and complexity expectations. Again, those state tests are very rigorous, and I think a lot of times, we are, um, we're teaching, but if we don't know what rigor rate we're supposed to be teaching at, then we're not, we're not meeting that. So, knowing where the rigor rate is and making sure our instruction is meeting, is mirroring that. Emphasis on aligning instruction with rigor and complexity. Yes, just said that. Monthly progress monitoring meetings, um, to guide tier-one and tier-two instruction. Secondary, we are, um, meeting with subject-level teams to go over data from OST, our map diagnostic data, talk about what types of resources the Ohio State, um, testing site has for our teachers and how to use it. Subject-level meetings, um, focusing on data-driven, driven planning and rigor. Those are what have been happening for the last two months now. Um, exploring courses that meet college career workforce and military readiness indicators. Teacher and building goals. All TBT teams have created their own, um, team goals and it, that are aligned to our district priorities, and those, they have already started. They started that at the very beginning of the year, so they put in, um, action plans, and they have been, um, looking at their data and seeing, are they working towards that goal? Uh, do they need to, to make any changes? All teachers and administrators have developed two OTES or OPEZ-aligned PGP goals, which is a professional growth plan, which is really, um, focusing on what we need to do ourselves to improve student achieve, achieve, achievement, sorry. Um, each teacher has identified two high-quality student data measures to monitor student growth from the beginning of when, maybe the semester, if they only have them for a semester, the year, if they have them for a year, a quarter, if they have them for a quarter. So, really honing in on student data and making sure these students are showing growth. And then finally, our literacy and foundational skills as our action. Um, state-funded literacy coach, we did, um, get, her name is Ellie Lee, and she's supporting our elementary, um, specifically in grades first and second to, um, make sure that we deepen those foundational skills and that we're really focusing on improving literacy in those early grades. Building strong foundational literacy skills to improve off-track to on-track, um, to on-track transitions, and then strengthening early reading to create competent, proficient readers district-wide. So, um, just to summarize, um, I want to shift, um, from the data itself to what we're doing right now, and all of these things have been in place since we started the year. Um, all of our teams have been very focused on student achievement and making, um, improvement changes, no matter if we have data that shows that we're doing something well, we can do it better. What areas do we really need to hone in on? And I think, um, you know, going through and meeting with these teams regularly and progress monitoring, we'll be able to achieve that, so, um. Does anybody have any questions? I know that was a lot of information. Sorry.
No.
Hopefully, nobody.
It was very thorough. It really was, and I appreciate the time you put on explaining it.
Well, I could really, I mean, here's the truth. They're coming out with different, um, report card data information, um, trainings, and there throughout the entire year. That's how, how involved some of the scoring and some of the information is. It's not something that you can talk about in thirty minutes. It's really something that we could talk about for a long time. But, um, I think that it's important that we all have some type of background on what, um, how they're calculated and what our data is. I think that it would be great if we could do a mid-year data review and go through some of our diagnostic data and show how we are progressing, um, because again, this is once, once-a-year data that we can use to help, but really, what are we doing every day?
January?
Yeah, January.
Just to say, I know, I, I think that would be great just to, for the community also to hear, besides us, but the community also to hear how we're actually using this data, it's not just words.
Right.
But I think it would be, I don't know if it's a joke, I know it's not always fun to sit here and listen to data. Um, but it, it is, I think it's essential that our community knows that we are using these resources. It's not just words or educational acronyms.
Absolutely.
These are things we are doing on a daily basis, so that would be phenomenal.
That's one of the things that I wrote down, is if we could do some sort of mid-year review and, and break this down to, you were very thorough, very detailed. Breaking down the areas, you know, if we're talking first through third grade, breaking down in more simplistic terms, here's why we're struggling based off of these testing that you're giving, and here's the exact process that we are doing to, to try to make this better, just to help, like, you know, let the, you know, obviously, the community know, let the parents know, here's what to expect, here's what we're trying. And then if there's a way, and I was gonna get with you after this, some of these, like, metrics, if we could put this together and maybe compare it against other local districts or like districts, that would be fantastic, not just the entire state, so they can see how we compare in different areas and what we need to do.
Sure, yeah, yeah, that's not a problem, and they do have all that data available. Um, but I agree, I think this is great data as, again, an outcome summary data of what we did last year and then informing what we're doing. But there is a lot more important data, even just speaking about the progress monitoring data. That's so important. Are our students, are our students benefiting for what we're doing every week, every day? Not one year at a time, so, um, even showing diagnostic data would be beneficial on top of this. So, I would be happy to do that in January. And I'm happy to answer any questions at any time, so. But yeah, I think we can get some of that data together. This is gonna be available on the website. Um, Mark's gonna put that on when he puts the video and stuff on linked, so.
Miranda, um, from, from what discussion you and I have had and, and what you talked about tonight, it seems like a lot of the issue that may be having in some of these, when we look at our performance indexes, is that, uh, the, the early literacy seems like it could have a snowball effect with a lot of the state testing. Um, and I know, I, I, I think, um, if I remember correctly, that's something Mr. Hampton and Megan and Mrs. Rouse picked up on pretty early on when you came in, that we really need to focus on that. And so I think it's important for people to understand that we are working on those things. Our administrators have, have seen this and, um, are, are putting the effort in. And, um, I think one thing that, that strikes me too is, as a board, we're looking at our financial situation, and we're looking at what we have to cut back and pull back on. And I know the fellows has been part of that. Uh, so, I, I, I think it is important for the public to understand that, um, we have administrators that are looking at this, have, I think, seen a, a big part of why we're struggling with some of these areas, and, um, I hope we can figure out ways to continue to give them the resources that they need, uh, to improve.
I agree, and I just wanna mention one other thing, just to piggyback that. Um, so this, I didn't bring in other data points because this is just one data point, right? Um, and this doesn't even have our data as far as, you know, our diagnostic scores from what we've been doing, but I do wanna mention, I don't remember the exact percentage of our first diagnostic data, but it was much higher than it has been previously, which means while we've been starting in preschool has had a positive effect, kindergarten has had a positive effect. Our students, actually this year, um, we've had less students off-track at the beginning of this year than we had previously. Um, so I think that, um, data in itself, I didn't present that, but it is a huge picture, um, piece that we are, what we did last year as far as foundation has worked, and these students have been growing, so. Um, but yeah, all these little pieces go together to help this, and I think you're right. If we can't, um, teach our students to read, then how are they gonna read tomorrow? Right? Yeah.
That has been one interesting piece of data that I kind of, I wanna give our teachers a little pat on the back. So, for example, last year at this time, our, in kindergarten, we had twenty-two kids off-track in our kindergarten class at this time of the year. That same group of kids who's currently in first grade, out of those twenty-two, only eleven remain off-track. And so, I think that's a big testament. I'll be honest, I went through and highlighted name by name, looking at kid by kid. And for me, that tells you that our efforts in preschool and kindergarten are indeed a show.
Right.
Now, do we have a lot of work to do? Absolutely. But that was redeeming to me to say, we're kind of on the right track. We're moving in the right direction, but it's a slow process. I mean, I, I, I wish the data was, this right here is concerning to me and the elementary principal, and I think, as we keep saying, that is a big focus. But there are a lot of things our teachers have been doing that I think we're gonna eventually pay off for.
And I do also want to remind everyone, we did just get a new literacy program. So, that has a big impact too. That curve of, you know, implementation, a lot of times we see regression statewide, and I think that's a lot of the dips that we, that we discussed in the third-grade data statewide. Um, it takes five years to see an improvement on what, what new curriculum and program that we're implementing. And I think that after this short amount of time and we're seeing that growth, I think, um, the people and the program, we need to just keep, keep on keeping on. It's working slowly but surely, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
The next one.
Are we the tech support tonight?
I'm the tech support. And happily, I am. Yeah, I'm just gonna stay right here.
All right, I, I don't have anything else to present, uh, but this, I mean, this is probably a critical, it's critical board meeting, okay? We're talking about the two most important things in our jobs. Uh, one, we've got balanced money. Okay, Kim's getting ready to talk about that. We gotta do the best we can with what we have. But two, uh, primary goal is educate children, period. And we have to find a way to do both. Um, it might not be as easy as it seems. Uh, we can do what we can with what we have, but eventually, we're at a point where we're gonna have to make decisions about how we do that. So, I'll get out of your way, Miss Knapper. We wanna wait for Blake to come back before we begin.
What'd you get?
His daughter in law, three times.
Oh. So, getting a graceful minute or two.
Take, we'll take a five-minute break.
Yep.
Or, or until Blake returns. How's that?
Sorry.
Can't wait. You're up, Kim.
Move back on?
Back on.
So, this is the fiscal year twenty-six fall forecast. House Bill ninety-six, the state's biannual budget, um, introduced several changes that affected the five-year forecast. Besides the fund, besides the funding changes, new filing dates, new format requirements, um, we're still required to submit two forecasts a year to the Higher Department of Education and Workforce. And the new dates are August thirty-first and the last day of February. Except for this year, this fall one is October fifteenth. That's what we're gonna review tonight.
These slides will also be up there.
Yeah. Previous forecast included five years of projections, um, under House Bill ninety-six. They want a current-year budget information and then three years of projections. So, that's gonna cause us to refile our budget to make these things align each time. So, we'll see tonight an approval for the forecast and then approval to revise the budget to, to align with this, to meet the requirements. Um, internally, we're just gonna continue to do the full five-year projections, um, because we use those for financial planning, um, helps support our long-term financial decisions. The state submission, we'll, we'll submit the three-year format. Figures in, included in the forecast are projections as of today, based on the best available data, subject to change. These, these numbers continuously changing as new information becomes available. We'll, we'll start with a summary, and this is of the operating account. Just want a quick reminder, forecasts are based on fiscal years that run July one through June thirty. So, for this fiscal year twenty-six, we're talking July one twenty-five through June thirty of twenty-six. So, if you look at the blue bar, it's the projected revenue. The yellow bar is the projected expenses, and the blue line is our cash balance. You'll notice the decline in revenue from twenty-five to twenty-six. That's for that, um, expiration of income tax levy. Uh, after that, revenue just stays flat. There's a noticeable dip in expenditures in twenty-six. This is not a reduction in spending. This was as a result of that transfer we made in June to move the four point five million of our capital plan from the general fund to a capital projects plan.
So, this balance does not include the O seventy funds in it?
This does not here. Later on, I'll have a slide to add it back in, so we can all see where it's truly, truly at.
So, that's why our expenditures are twenty-four million, basically, on that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, that four point five, when it's an expense.
Okay.
Um, looking ahead, you'll see, um, expenditures increasing each year while revenue remains flat. Expenses are just outpacing revenue. Next slide is the current, um, current revenue. This is the twenty-six that we'll refile the budget for. Um, projected revenue broken down into three categories. The local, which includes property taxes, public utility, and the income taxes. You can see there's very minimum there of income tax. The state funding includes the Fair School Funding Plan, which is the foundation based on the state's formula. And this is the formula that they didn't increase the base cost on, so we're using twenty-two data in that formula as the base cost. Okay? Um, state funding's now making up fifty-two percent of our funding with the income taxes gone. Um, and then the rest of it's split between local and other. Now, this slide is the projected revenue, or expenses. Um, this data is, reflects the operating account, and the school-wide pool is in this, it was in the all-other expenses as a transfer. I reallocate that to the salaries and benefits and supplies, so you can see our actual on the chart, how much we spend on personnel costs, which is eighty-three percent of our budget. And this is on the projected revenue. Um, the property tax, you can see increasing. The county auditor reflected that evaluations will go up twenty to twenty-five percent. That's for tax year twenty-six with collections in twenty-seven, so that's where you see that, that bump. And I, and I projected them in there at twenty. I think it goes a whole twenty-five.
So, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, you projected?
It's just.
Twenty percent?
No, just in twenty-seven. Um, and then the income tax, this is the drop.
Quickly, Kim. Quickly, Kim, you have a, under property tax, there is a pretty sizable increase each year. From '27, '28, and then it's flat again.
There is a.
How is those?
There is a valuation for the Meigs County portion that comes in the opposite year. So '27 would be the Athens County. And then Meigs County has one and then Benton has a slight one in the opposite year. So we're actually getting evaluation increases each year. I think I have Meigs in there at 10 to 12 maybe.
Okay.
Check that number back.
Under the current discussions, under that umbrella of property tax reform, how much of this could be gutted? Is there a notional leading candidate that gives us a feeling?
I wouldn't guess. I mean, worst case scenario, it'd all be gone. Zero. I mean, you start at zero and work your way back up.
I know that's been proposed.
It has been proposed. You know, some of the things that we're talking about is, well, I'm going to stay out of it. I've said enough politically tonight.
I mean, in the limit, 25% of our overall revenue
Yes.
is at risk under the umbrella of property tax reform.
And the interesting piece is that for rural districts, we, we rely on that more than urban districts. And you can see that in some of the numbers that I shared. It's a big portion, and it isn't just isolated to us. I mean, this is every, every rural district in the state and every rural district in the state. We educated about 80% of the kids in the state, in rural type districts, so. We'll stay out of the way of the presentation.
Unrestricted grants and restricted grants on there, that's our state funding. We have those together. And then operating transfers in, that's new revenue. That's the sports fees that are coming in that was started this fall. And kind of just put it out there flat until we see how that's going to happen.
Is, is there an initial guess at that? I mean, we're, we're in every sport per fall, so we're one-third in, right?
It came in at 18,000.
Okay.
The fall one.
And this isn't just sports, right?
This, this one is.
That one's just sports?
Yes, the clubs will just come into the general fund. It'll be in the other revenue.
And this, this revenue would diminish through the year. Ball coverage.
It's going to multi-sell, yeah?
Yeah. Okay, next slide, projected expenses and cash balance. This is just reflecting our operating count, which is the general fund. The projections increase each year. The largest is personnel, employees, and then the operating transfers out, which again is our schoolwide pool. And I, on the slide before, I had broken that out into salaries and benefits. You can, you can see that. So the beginning fund balance is 4.5 million less than if you look at the ending on the May one we filed. And that's that transfer that we made to the O-70 fund capital project. We took our capital plan, moved what we had for the first five years on it to the, to the O-70 fund, just to kind of protect those, those funds, depending on what the state decides to do.
Now it's based off of legal guidance for, for what the state's trying to do right now. We can still pull that back if we have to.
Yes, those funds are accessible and can be moved back to the general fund.
Since they're fluid in that way, they count towards when we're looking at policy and we can maintain a 30%. That, we can count that in our, oh, don't, oh no, don't do that. Say yes.
Depending how it's written, the, it's just 30% of your operating account, so.
So I don't see it that way. Well, we just moved our hitting policy up a couple of years. Yep.
Okay, so this is what's required to be filed. So if anybody goes on and notes, this is what they're going to see. But on the next slide, I wanted to add back in the, the O-70 fund, the expenditures and that cash balance. So we plan on spending 422,000 in operating. Doing the building, the ceiling of the building, the parking lot, all of that is added in that 422,000. So we don't have 4.2 million or 4.5 million in that O-70 fund that's going down. It's 4.1. And I just wanted to show that that continuously goes down. So in a couple of years, you can't say move that four and a half million back because we're spending that. I want to make sure everybody understands we're spending that as we go. So the highlighted line there, I feel that is more our full deficit spending. Truer, that's what we should be making decisions off of. And these amounts are as of today and they're going to change going forward. Just want to make sure everybody understands that these are as of today.
Literally.
Right. And depending on the state and the legislation and what they do and if it's significant changes, we're only required to file two, but if it makes a significant difference to this, we're required to refile. So we could file in November, we could file another forecast. We could file multiple forecasts throughout the year. So we'll, we'll keep it up to date each month.
I, I think it's, it's worth mentioning, I, I, Ms. Ball, I know you criticize our executive sessions, but this, this fiscal year 26, which is the one we're in now, Android as well, there's a lot of private conversations that we have to keep private because it affects personnel. But a lot of the outcome of those executive sessions that I know you guys growl about, it, it is in that, that first year, that fiscal year 26 deficit number. We, I, I think it's safe to say this publicly, but we, we kind of agreed in March that we were going to deficit spend this year. And at least the projection right now is in line with what we all were going to tolerate on deficit spending for this year. Now, that doesn't mean that we, we rest on our laurels because we still got 27 and 28 staring us in the face. And unfortunately, to move the ship, again, in a little bit better direction than a million dollar deficit, we have to make some changes. But I think it's, 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 it has to be stressed that this, we are deficit spending number one this year. And we, we decided we could live with roughly $600,000 in deficit spending. If we don't do anything, you can see Kim's projections is going to continue to increase. And what the changes are going to be, we're going to be back in executive sessions from here until next year. So I just, I, I just wanted to bring that up to let you know that we are, we are deficit spending this year. Let's say it's the first time we've deficit spent in a number of years now. And it's, unless something changes, it, it's not going to change. Our reserves will slowly dwindle. Thank you.
I mean, it puts us at a point of decision, not only in personnel, but also in what we do as a board in pursuing revenue. The outcome is self fulfilling, follow one path. So we do have to talk about how we proceed. And boats can happen at once. All good, Kim?
Yep.
Anybody have questions? Comments or move on?
I, I guess my, my only, when it comes to the O-70, oh,
Kevlar project fund.
Kevlar project fund. I think it's important just for those that are just hearing that for the first time, it's, it's important to realize that that is something that we were advised to do in order to protect the plan that we had already put into place when the budget lines had moved literally overnight on us. And so the fact that the expenditures look up, look $4,000, $4 million higher than in, in 2025, that, that's just that transfer of funds.
Yes.
And that, that money is earmarked for, and been planned out for, in our five year plan to spend. It just protects that money to spend it. That's all it was.
Kim, do you recall that, I mean, we, we made the change based on legal guidance because what was in the budget was that provision that said you can't keep more than whatever the amount was.
40%.
Did, did that make it into the actual budget and was that vetoed?
It's still being debated.
Yeah. So, so yes and yes.
The recommend.
The next question is that it's up for overturn, is what else?
Yes.
It was vetoed, but.
It was vetoed.
But it's still.
It is still a hot potato in legislature. It was vetoed, governor put his work group together. The work group has recommended a 100% carryover as a recommendation. The 40% is still on the table with legislators. We're hoping that some of the work that's been done will allow the 100% to remain in effect. And that's if you're over 100%, which we're not going to be right now. I can tell you that flat out. I'd take, I'd take that three years from now, we won't be at 100%. If it goes over 100%, at a certain point, you have to meet with the auditor to justify. So it's still an item for discussion. It may come out in the next week or two.
Then one last comment before we move on to tag on to what you said. We have not deficit spent for several years. The reason for that was we had a levy.
Correct.
Absolutely.
And you had COVID money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we swirled away that COVID money, every opportunity we had, which is why we have to help you balance now. Why we're okay with deficits spending. Soon we will not be okay with deficit spending because we won't have that capability.
Yeah.
This 500,000 was down from what was originally projected 1.2. I think this year, we made $700,000 worth of changes this year.
We've been making changes.
Which is what we'll continue to have to do in these next few years, so.
It just depends how aggressive we get and if we want to look for a solution.
Appreciate it.
Good, okay. Moving on, public participation for agenda items.
I'm teaming.
Thank you.
Moving on to treasurer's recommendations. It's recommended Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 10th, 2025 regular meeting.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial statements for the month ending September 30th, 2025.
So move.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following transfers. It's our normal schoolwide pool transfers.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the financial forecast, current budget and three forecast years.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended Board of Education approve the revision to the appropriations and revenues and to certify, and certify to the county auditor.
So move. Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Moving on to superintendent's recommendations. It's recommended Board of Education approve the following substitute teacher and paraprofessionals as recommended by the Athens Megs YSC Superintendent.
So move. Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
I'll stay.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended Board of Education employ the following supplementals for the '25, '26 school year, pending their meeting all state and local requirements and the constitution of a complete team for the year.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended Board of Education employ Megan Kunal as an as-needed tutor for the '25, '26 school year pending her meeting all state and local requirements.
So move.
Seconded.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended Board of Education employ Lacey Casto as seasonal casual labor at $12 per hour effective September 13th, 2025, or correction, September 30th, 2025.
So move. Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yeah, sorry, Granny's birthday was September 13th.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education accept the resignation of Tessa Hill effective September 9th, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended Board of Education accept the retirement resignations of the following.
So move.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
It's recommended that the Board of Education grant the request for early graduation for the following, pending their meeting all requirements.
So move. Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
All right, moving on to board policy updates. I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Hampton here.
You know.
He thought he was done talking, but.
No, I'm not done talking. Something that I talked about earlier this year with the May adoption of policies. And I said, this is going to happen fast and furious. There are going to be a lot of changes. Many of these, multitude of these are a result of the budget and the changes within the budget. And many are just language based. They are changing one term to another, job and workforces to something different. But the, the essence of the policy doesn't change. But with that, there are decisions or things to discuss as we move related to the policies. And I shared with you guys some things. One of the things in the policies was to expedite the reading of the policies because of the changes in the budget, because policies were inserted into the budget. We have to be on top of it right now. And we no longer have that two-month period to wait for all of these changes to take place. Many of those changes don't affect us. We don't have ice hockey. And why ice hockey was singled out in a, a policy, I'm not sure. But if you guys want to add ice hockey, I mean, I'm sure we find a following. But there, that's an example of some of the expedited changes that were thrown into the budget and how it becomes a cumulative little pool of things. But there are things here that we talk about. The first, and I'll go through, there are about 10 of them that are, are at least worth a conversation. The first is about bidding requirements. And we have a current policy that has $10,000 as our limit. And Kim recommended we maintain what we have in current language. Some districts will want to do differently. The next is the IGG, IGBB, and that is programs for gifted students. And it's about adding our plan and making changes within our plan. Coincidentally and beneficially, we updated our plan last year. So we will upload our new plan with that. So that will fill that in. There have been no major changes, but we just solidified our plan. We will sync that in and submit that to the state and it'll be in the policy. This, the next is curricular and extracurricular activities. It ties to ice hockey, that is an example there. It needs to be effective immediately. And there are two policies, IGDJ, both of those are related to ice hockey. We already allow students, if a neighboring district doesn't offer a sport, they are, have the ability to apply to play here in those sports. We already allow that. And I'm not certain of the details of why ice hockey was singled out in this. Grading systems, we already have grading systems in place that match what the state is looking for. Acceleration plan, this is IKEB. We have an acceleration plan. Mrs. Smith talked a little bit about that. I think it's going well. We're going to continue to expand that. The graduation requirements, and this goes to financial literacy. And this is where I would. And this is where I would kind of change my initial tone, is that we have the option to keep what we do and to exclude programs offered by outside agencies. But there are times when outside agencies come in and provide the instruction and have the appropriate curriculum. By accepting the curriculum from an outside agency, like a bank, if a bank was to come in and work with our kids on the financial literacy piece, they can do it here, and we can allow that, we don't have to allow that, it gives us the option to do so. And so if we put that option in, maybe that'll be a cost-saving for us down the road, but we can do that in that moment. You got a question? You look like you're thinking hard.
Well, I had to tip my cheaters up so I could see more than five feet out of my.
Yes.
So you said I K E B, but I was looking for I K B on here.
That was for the acceleration?
Should it be on tonight?
Is it not in there?
It is not.
Okay.
That's just one that I caught up.
Okay, we can add that, that's not time-sensitive, we can talk about that one next month. I will circle that and get with Molly for the agenda next, next time. Did all of that make sense with the financial literacy? The next is I N D, and it is related to changes in pledge, we have a current policy, our current policy is an option within the state to maintain, I would recommend we keep our current policy the same. The Religious Expression Days, and that's J E D C. We have a policy for Religious Expression Days, and I would recommend keep our current language as an option. And the Religious Release Time for Instruction, and this is a big thing, it's really rooted in the Northwest, but it is coming this direction, we have the option of allowing students to spend one or two periods in religious instruction during the day. I would, I would recommend we begin slowly, and we stay with one policy, with one period per week. Where kids will actually be released to go get religious instruction.
That's the, the policy we just updated with, like requiring.
But now we have to decide whether it's one period per, per week or two.
I'm okay with.
I'm okay with one.
I'm okay with one.
Yeah, we don't have to, yeah. The rest of these, between required policies and currently adopted policies, largely they are language changes that come with it, and they're corrective language that are tied to it. And I don't know if you guys have had, I know I've given you a lot to read, you've had a lot of homework, but if you have questions about specific policies, then.
The expedited, my only concern, the expedited one readings that have two readings. The, my understanding is that the two readings is essentially for the community, to give time for the community to be aware of the policy changes. Going down to one, is that something that?
It now gives us the option to do it.
We, we don't have to do it.
It was insisted to do because policies came into effect at the end of the month because of the budget.
Right.
But going forward, we would have the option then.
To do, so we could still.
We could still operate under the two-month.
Policy, but if necessary, we could expedite it when, when needed. Because I, personally, I, I mean, I, I don't know how many people keep track of the readings and all the policies and stuff like that, but it does, it usually takes that first saying of a policy when somebody goes, gets that ring in their ear, and then they read it, and then they, we, it takes time to discuss whatever affects, like something I never thought of, a situation in that policy. So I personally like it to.
And I would like to do that at every opportunity possible.
Okay.
As long as there's no urgency involved, I think we'll stay with that.
Okay.
Kim and I received this a few days before Senate.
Right.
So you're, you're wanting to vote on this tonight? What's the harm that we don't?
Oh, we don't have policies adopted that are in play.
What's the fallout for?
You know, we, we just operate as we normally operate, and if we want to adopt it next month and give people time to process, that's fine. We will be out of compliance with some of these, but many of them do not apply.
To us specifically, and I, I mean, to me, the big, when it comes to policy, it's just if a situation were to come up, and in this case, with the things hended overnight, and with what's going on, I think it might be in our best interest to make sure we do it tonight. An idea that.
I don't know the consequence, like I said, I don't know the consequence of waiting.
I don't know. I don't like having stuff shoved down my throat about, I mean, in all fairness, this is, this is all, nothing against Mr. Hampton, what I'm about to say, but, I mean, we, you got this mid to late last week, shared it with us, and there's a whole page, and I can guarantee you, five of us has not, we have not even had time to digest this properly. I'll just speak for everybody, because I mean, there might be one of us here, but we, we can vote on it tonight, and I'll tell you right now, I don't know what I'm voting on. Just, I mean, I'll tell you straight up, that's why I don't like it.
Would it make sense then to table these items until the next quarter?
Me, yeah.
Just call this the first reading.
This is the first reading, we go.
I, I read them, and I have not read them.
Yep.
We.
I take no offense to any of this.
If we get a phone call from the school attorney and say, why didn't you do this, then we have a meeting and find out what we gotta do.
We'll be fine.
Well, that's kind of what I think, but.
We'll be fine.
First reading.
There you go. Where am I, where were we in the agenda, Ms. Kim?
The policy that we had last month, so this will be the second reading for it.
I'll just be the, the.
Which one?
I'm gonna, can I just be the, the?
Sure. Whatever you want to do.
I, I, I make a motion to table this to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, let's do that.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yeah.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yep.
All right, Kim, you said we have one, two vote on?
Uh, yes, on the top of page five, B.
B, okay, that's where I was headed next.
That was the one that got left out.
It's recommended the Board of Education approve the following policy for inclusion in the Policies and Procedures Manual as recommended by O S V A and its Regarding Purchasing Procedures.
So move.
I'll second it, and before we vote, I do have a quick question. There's nothing in that, from what I read, that precludes us from being able to do like we did with the field where we don't have any qualifying responses or not enough responses, and we can act as an emergency and move forward, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Business initiated by board members, I'll make a motion to approve the contract to employ Kimberly Napper as treasurer beginning August first, twenty twenty-six, and continuing through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight in accordance with the terms and conditions presented to this board.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Have any board reports? Public participation for non-agenda items. Everybody? Our next meeting is Wednesday, November twelfth, seven P M, here at the library, everybody good? It's our regular second Wednesday of the month. Do we have anything to talk about?
Yes.
We do, okay. All right, so no action planned?
No.
Okay. So with that being said, just a reminder, November twelfth, and then I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss the employment, appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of employer official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against an employer or an official.
Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Hopefully this will be.
We don't even have anything to talk about, we just want to.
We just wanted.
I wonder if I, I think it was Miranda.
Okay.
Okay, it is nine oh four, back into regular session, and I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Blake?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Josh?
C.
Stephen?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Thanks, folks.